The views, information, and opinions expressed during the following program are solely those of the individuals involved and do not necessarily represent the views of Access Communications, its representatives, or its employees.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the regular council meeting of March 13th. We'll call the meeting to order. First of all, under presentations this evening, it's a pleasure to welcome Gord Moore, our executive director on the Innovations Council. Gord, please take it away.
Thank you. A little story, some of you may already know this, but my great-grandfather is buried in Estevan, and he came out via steam train to Estevan in 1912 to sell internal combustion engine farm equipment for International Harvester. But unfortunately, he passed away in 1917, and great-grandmother, and grandfather, and siblings all had to move to B.C. to live with the uncle. My family back in B.C. says that I've undone all the family's hard work. But think about that for a minute. The technology of the steam engine disrupted Western Canada. It completely disrupted the lives of the indigenous side of my family, but in doing that, it created Estevan. Technology and innovation gave us the combine, it gave us the pump jack, and it gave us all the market that we sell our products into. But innovation never stops. It never freezes, it never stagnates. My software company became successful by being one of the first companies in the world to commercialize mobile GPS. Back in 2006, had we just stayed there and said, "We're done," we would not exist. We had to continue to innovate and to use technology. We used AI to read barcodes, we used AI to dispatch to drivers, and that's how we still exist. So for Estevan, the same thing is true. We must, Estevan must survive, sorry, for Estevan to survive, we must continue to innovate. At the same time, I would challenge all of you to think beyond innovation as a means of survival, but to grow. As Alan Nixon from Revolutionary Engineering, a local person who's helping us with the robots, he said to me over and over, "There's no reason why Estevan can't have a population of 30,000 people if we use innovation." Or how about what Dr. Eric Grimson said from MIT when he was here to do his presentation? Quote, he said, "Estevan has the potential and should do its best to become a technology hub, grow its own, and also attract tech technology." The Southeast Tech Hub's mission is, "We are a collaborative hub that inspires and nurtures the growth of innovation and technology-based companies in Southeast Saskatchewan. We are a catalyst and a conduit for the growth of technology-based education in our community by working with students of all ages. By fulfilling our mission, we contribute to job creation and enhance economic health of our community." Now, there's two parts to that mission. The first part is the obvious. We're here to create additional new jobs and companies in Estevan. But the other part is just as important. For technology-based education in our communities, we need, we need more of that, and that is what the Tech Hub advocates for. We need it from elementary to the comp through to the college. Unfortunately, with education, we're still standing at the starting line, and the race started decades ago. What I mean by this is Saskatchewan needs help promoting its provincial curriculum for computer science. Most of us didn't even know it existed. I just found out. It needs to provide teacher training for computer science, encouraging schools, school boards, and the Minister of Education to provide computer science classes in all our schools. A good reason why was when Dr. Eric did his presentation, he said 46% of all undergraduate admissions, those children all had computer science in their public schools. On a side note, the comp's computer science class exists this year because of a man named Stephen Elton, one of the teachers, took it upon himself to learn Python and JavaScript. And Python is not an easy language to learn. A good example of the advocacy of what the Tech Hub's doing is the Estevan Robotics. Simply put, the Tech Hub and the students are building a bipedal robot with a planned completion of June 2024. I would love to see it playing hockey on Rafferty. It might happen. But we're not just building a single robot, we're building iterations of a robot to get to our bipedal robot. The first iteration is a jousting robot. This robot is riding a horse, holding a lance, and the students are building these jousting robots to hold a jousting competition either this year or early next. Next year, I plan to work, or we plan to work, with entrepreneurial class on the business, to teach them on the business of innovation using the robotic initiative. We'll teach them what a burn rate is. They will have to oversee the budget for the robot, and when they get low on funds, they have to go out to the community and ask real businesses what pain points that they have and find out how the robot can solve those problems. We're also encouraging the college in having them bring in computer science to Estevan and to have summer classes for the kids in computer science and technology. Have you guys ever heard of Skip the Dishes? So what was created by two brothers in P.A., in Prince Albert. Sadly, when they tried to set up shop in Saskatchewan, they received no to little support. That's why they're now in Winnipeg with 2,000 jobs. We need to stop that from happening again. We need those jobs. So how does Estevan say to two young youth with innovative technology-based idea that we want you and your idea in our community? The first step is to break down all the walls and fears of misunderstanding about what innovation and technology is. That's why we created the drone racing team. Drones are considered by some in the community as a spy or as a weapon of mass destruction. But when I started to use my drone, my high-speed drone, filming the race cars, I didn't realize how much attention it was drawing with my goggles on. When I took the goggles off and the next week I was walking around, people would come up to me and say that they enjoyed watching my drones more than the race cars. Just don't tell Brad or Byron, but that's what they said. So quickly, I realized that the drone was a way to break down the fear of misunderstanding that some people have about technology in our community by having people build their own drone. The key word is control. When people are in control, they lose their fear. By building their own racing drone, they learn how to create new technology, and they learn about computer science, and they learn about engineering. Not only that, drones are fun. Another way we're inspiring innovation and technology is through the innovation conversations. So Dr. Eric's presentation was only the first. We currently have Jeff Sanquist, Dr. Aaron Gens from Siemens Canada lined up. I also have tentative offers from a Saskatchewan native who is building a new fusion reactor at MIT. I also have an Estevan native who is working for Apple in California. The final project for the Tech Hub in 2023 is hosting a pitch competition. We aim to host that in Q4. But it's a unique pitch competition. We're not just giving the winner a gold star and a Tim Hortons gift card. We're giving the winner real seed money to start their company. I aim to have the seed money prize at $10,000 to $20,000. The prize also includes free use of the Tech Hub, and it's open to all residents of Saskatchewan 18 years or older. But to receive the seed money, they must base their company in Estevan. I plan to do this once a year, and I expect to see three new startups from just this one initiative every time we do it. One from the winner and two from others who now see Estevan as a place for innovation and for technology. But here's the real trick of everything that I'm doing, or we are doing. With the innovation talks, with the drone races, with the robots, Estevan is creating noise. People outside of our community in Saskatchewan and across Canada now are saying, "What is going on in Estevan?" They're taking notice. And that's great. We want people to think of Estevan, to bring their ideas, to bring their jobs, to bring their money. It's how we grow beyond survival and how we grow to a sustainable economy of 30,000 people. And that last bit, I know, seems like a bit of a dream, but remember, as Dr. Eric Grimson pointed out, MIT's innovation has created an economy that would rank MIT as the ninth largest GDP country in the world. So I'd like to end my presentation with some simple words from, using a bit of Eric's words and some of mine. Let's be bold. Let's turn ourselves from the disrupted to the disruptors.
Okay, thank you, Gord. Thank you very much. Appreciate your time. Any questions or comments from members of council? Counselor Clark?
Thanks, Your Worship. Had lots of conversations with Gord, and I think the search that this community needs is for those people with passion out there that find something that they, that they want to do, and they now have a way of doing that right in our community. And I just want to thank you for what you're doing to give that path for people in our community to find that next thing and to, you know, to start a business or create something in our community and us to be part of it. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Counselor Clark, any other questions or comments? Counselor Ford?
Thanks, Your Worship. And just to add to that, I just, I want to say we appreciate so much of all the work and the hard work you do, and you're really giving every age demographic in this community an opportunity to succeed, from the children to be able to fight for, you know, the computer science programs, to working with the innovation class at St. Mary's, to the adults who just want to have some fun and raise some drones, and you're really, really pushing, kind of pushing your borders, and it's really great to see. And I hope in the next couple of years, we're not shocked to hear that, you know, more people from our community aren't going to MIT or are working for Apple, because I think every time, I know, when I hear that, that someone, someone from our community works for Microsoft or Apple, I'm totally shocked to be like, "How did you get there?" So I really hope that in the next couple of years, we kind of go into this with an open mind and to be able to say, "Hey, this person is doing that, and they got there because they succeeded in our community." So we just thank you so much for all the work you're doing to make that happen.
Thank you, Counselor Ford. Counselor Wallyser is not with us in person, but she's on the screen tonight, so I'll try to keep, keep remembering that. Go ahead, Counselor Vroba.
Thank you, Worship. Thank you, Gord, for coming tonight. I really enjoyed your presentation. I like your passion. I'm interested to see what the pitch platform will actually bring to this community, because I think that's great. Even the drones, I know a lot of people feel like they're an invasion of privacy when they see them. They think it's just creepy people that are trying to look in their backyard. So I think it's great that you're going to bring some more knowledge to that and creativity for people to be able to build their own. So thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Vroba. Go ahead, Counselor Ford.
Sorry, me again. And just, Gord, could you possibly tell everybody when the Tech Hub is open and if you're available for just people to walk in or stop by and even see your drones and all kind of all what you're up to?
I've seemed to be there every day, all day, but that's because I love what I'm doing. Monday to Friday, 9 to 5, and just, yeah, please come in. Lindsay came in, I had him racing the drones around the office. It's a lot of fun. But from that experience, you came up with a whole bunch of wonderful ideas that you could suddenly now see opportunity with innovation just by flying that drone. So come on by.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Clark?
Thanks, Your Worship. And I think that's part of it. We want to encourage the community that if you think of something, to come to the Innovation Center and see if there is a solution for it. Is there something you're doing in your day-to-day that maybe it will work? And some young people can work on a problem or that. And I, I think that's what, you know, when you're out there doing your day-to-day work and somebody says, "I wonder if we could do this better," that's what, that's what we're looking for. And that's, you know, I think that's what you're going to do is, is find a path for those people to do that. That's the goal.
Okay, thank you. And yeah, with agriculture being one of our main economic drivers, I think here's an opportunity right among, in our midst here to maybe do some more innovations on egg, which is happening every day out, out in the field. So I think there's lots of opportunity with many different areas to move forward on the innovation side. So thank you so much, Gord, for coming. Counselor Sernick?
Yeah, just a simple question. Who's your little friend that's beside you there?
So we are blessed to have a new person helping us out at the Tech Hub, Anastasia, and she comes to us from the Ukraine, and she's got a completed undergraduate in robotics and aeronautics, so real blessing of her skills. So she's helping us out with some of the more challenging parts of the robots, and this is a raspberry pie on the top, and this is supposed to be a cat or a dog, but I think it more looks like a cat. And one of the things, once we finally get it working, we hope to have a naming competition for it. And apparently it can walk and dance and things, but we're getting there. It's only been a week.
Excellent. Good stuff. Any further questions or comments? Saying that, thank you so much, Gord, for coming.
You're welcome.
And thank you for all of the work and innovation that we know that will be happening moving forward. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Okay, next, could I have a motion, please, to adopt the agenda as presented? Counselor Vroba, seconded by Counselor Ford. Ready for the question, all in favor? Carried. Thank you. Next, could I have a motion, please, to accept a minutes of the council meeting held on February 27th? Thank you. Counselor Clark, seconded by Counselor Sernick. Ready for the question, all in favor? Carried. Thank you. Next, under original communications delegations and petitions, we have Mr. Turnbull with us this evening. Tyson, welcome. Please move up to the mic, and we will hear a report on concrete versus pavement, and we're looking forward to that. Thank you.
Thank you. Actually, it's on concrete as a pavement. Basically, I'm, I'm here to ask for some consideration and, and start a bit of a conversation on concrete as an alternative pavement to traditional asphalt pavement. Ashley from the Ready Mix Association of Saskatchewan, she was supposed to be here to help me out tonight. She wasn't able to make it. Her son, her son is in a playoff hockey game tonight, so I said, "Well, you don't miss that if he's in the playoffs."
Yeah, that would probably come first, yeah.
It's a must-win, so I said, "Well, okay, I'll, I'll do my best." So, yeah, just, yeah, just wanted to, just ask for some consideration on it as an alternative. One of the things is, it, when, when there's, you know, tenders for, for the, for paving streets and intersections, anything, the one thing that really would, would, I think, be real beneficial is life cycle cost analysis on these things. Haven't really seen that. Not 100% sure, but that's one of the things that would, would really, you'd be able to compare apples to, apples to apples if you did that. Normally, the, the initial investment is, is higher, but, you know, it, there's, there's a lot of municipalities and whatnot using it to save money. You know, that's what, what a lot of you are here to do is get the best bang for your buck for the city. It, you know, you could, you could start by doing, doing small areas, like intersections and approaches would be real small areas, small investment, but, but at the minimum, they would be a good test for this type of pavement. Let's say there's, there's a myth that, like in the States, they use, they use it, they use it quite extensively. There's a myth that, I've heard it said, Americans, oh, they, they do that, they got lots of money, they can, they can just throw money at it. I was recently down in Mexico, and I asked, "You see a lot of it down there?" I said, "Yeah, why, you do a lot?" "Oh, yeah, we do, we do a lot down here." Well, they're, they don't have all the money down there. They're, they're a third-world country. They're doing it to save money, you know? They, they're driving 30-year-old vehicles down there. They don't, they don't just have a bunch of money. They're, just people are smart with their money. At the very least, if there was competition, say between concrete and asphalt, at the very least, you might see your asphalt costs go down just, just alone in having the competition. Even, even if you don't do any of it, you at least might see, see the asphalt costs go down, and that alone, I think, would be worth it to, to give it some consideration. The association, I sent most of the documents there to Judy, so they, they can get, you can look at them, I guess, on, on your own time. We could, I just wanted to come here tonight, say a few things, and maybe we could set up a more extensive meeting later on with, with the association, and she said we could get some, some of the experts on it, engineering it and stuff like that, and people that have done it and seen the benefits. There's, there's a long list of benefits, not only in, in life cycle, the appearance of it, you, you won't have pothole season anymore. I guess that's, that's a big one. You know, it's, that's just kind of regular season here. There just wouldn't be that on, on the concrete roads. There's, so there's not, there's not, there's just not a lot of it around here, so I mean, it's, it's kind of one of them, them things, you don't, you know, it's not around, and there is, there's a few, I'm sure everybody saw last year, the paving in behind the mall. They did, did the whole lot back there in concrete. The, the post office and the radio station, that, that parking lot is concrete. I meant to get the year, some of you probably know the year that was built. I think it's about 20 years old, I believe, now. Just have a look, you know, it's, it's in perfect shape and not moving and quite, quite nice still. Audio Video Unlimited, or Brown Source, I guess it's called now. Of course, that's only about 10 years old, so it's not too much of a test of it yet, but still, you know, have a look at it. Also, MNP, their parking lot is concrete, and that's quite a bit older. Again, I don't know exactly how old, some, some people might, but yeah, it's obviously in, it's in quite good shape for, for its age. I mean, you could just look at it, and if you know how old it is, ask yourself what would, what would asphalt look like now and what money would, would we have put into, to an asphalt parking lot in that timeframe?
I think the Royal Bank parking lot, too, Tyson, that's cement, correct?
Right, yeah. Concrete.
It stood up very well.
Concrete.
I'm sorry.
Sorry.
Concrete. Let's make the difference.
I'm not trying to dig at you. That's one of my pet peeves is, is cement, cement is an ingredient we put in our concrete. I would say it's not cement.
Concrete's the finished product.
I never miss my opportunity to say that. Yeah.
Well, to the great unwashed, you explained that, so that's good.
Yeah. Yeah, I don't have a lot else, too much to say. We're, when we replace the water in sewer mains, the pipes in the ground, the pipe we're putting in now, it's, it, it's designed, it's lasted 50-plus years. So I guess, I wonder, why, why don't we, why don't we pave on top of the surface with, with a pavement that's designed to also last about the same, which is, a lot of times, that's what you'll get with concrete is, if, there's some that are seven years old and they're still driving on them, they're in real good shape. That's definitely the number-one advantage is, is the, the life cycle of it. Yeah, I don't have, don't have a lot else.
No, that, that's great, Tyson. I think you went over it very well. We'll open the floor. Counselor Vroba, you had a question?
Thank you, Worship. I was just curious, if we were to put on a road with concrete, what would happen with the salt from the road? Like, when we apply salt on it, does it disintegrate it or?
No, no, it, it's real resilient to that. The cement is GU cement. It's, it's designed to resist the, the chlorides you apply. It's also, you won't get the rotting with it, like you do with asphalt, you won't get the rotting where that, where the salt and you'll have the moisture hold there in, in the ruts. You know, the concrete, it stays nice grade all the way to the gutter, and, and that, that salt and water, it, it runs off a lot better.
And that's what I was wondering, because I read in here in your pamphlets that you gave us about how when you come into an intersection with asphalt right now, and it starts to get that rutting from the heavier traffic, and you won't get that with the concrete. So that's what I was curious about is, if you, if you could apply salt, because right now, they say a lot of the sidewalks and stuff, they tell you not to use the ice melt on it because it'll wreck it. Is, with that, that's why I was wondering if that'd be true about the road.
Right, yeah. You want to avoid using the, the salt in the first year with the sidewalk. Let's say on the streets here, you're putting down sand and salt. There's not a lot of salt in it. It's, it's a little different than just throwing a bag of salt on a sidewalk. But, but no, it's, it'll hold up, it holds up real good as long as, as long as it's done properly. If you get, if you get somebody throwing water on it as they're, they're finishing and stuff like that, I mean, you gotta, you gotta just watch the, watch the quality control on it is a big thing with, with the concrete pavement.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Vroba. Then we'll go to Counselor Clark, then Counselor Wallyser.
Thanks, Your Worship. One of the issues with pavement is it's tied quite strong to the price of crude. Is, is concrete or is the cement in the concrete, does it have a more steady price than that or does it fluctuate the same as, as when they're doing pavement with the price of crude oil?
I couldn't really say in comparison. We don't, don't really look at the price of, of asphalt too much, you know? We, so we kind of stay in our own lane a little bit, but, I mean, for example, in the last, last few years, it's, it's jumped for sure, but, but nothing near what, what anything else has. I couldn't really say if it's, if it's more stable, but you definitely don't see the, the big jumps. Every now and then, like we have with the cement, but of course, the cement is only one ingredient in it. It's, you know, rock and sand mainly, so the price has stayed fairly stable. We've been able to stay within 20 to 30% in the past few years here, 20%, so relatively stable compared to doubling and tripling stuff that you see these days.
Okay, Counselor Clark, Counselor Wallyser, then Counselor Frank. Oh, just wait, Counselor Wallyser. We gotta reset you.
She hasn't talked in a while. Maybe go to Travis first.
Oh, it's gonna take that long?
There we go.
There. Can you hear us now?
We're good?
Yep, we're good, we're good.
Okay, so I was quite interested to read about the effect on urban heat islands. That's not necessarily a feature that we're seeing here in Estevan, a city of our size, but certainly something to take into consideration moving forward. The other selling feature that really came through in the literature was the ability to recycle and reuse concrete. Is that something that's offered within the city currently?
Well, I can answer that a little. Norbis here, we do recycle the asphalt. Darvus here, we do recycle the asphalt. Darv, did you want to just speak to that?
We are stockpiling.
We stockpile it, then recycle, add some hot mix to it, but it wouldn't have the longevity...
Concrete?
No. Oh, the concrete? No. Tyson?
We stock concrete.
As well?
For recycling purposes, and we recycle paper.
Okay, we do them both, I guess. Councilor Wallyser. And what would your suggestion be, Tyson, if we stockpile it? That can be worked back into the new concrete?
It definitely can be, yeah, if there was advantage to, yeah, wanting to use a recycled... We haven't actually used recycled concrete in our concrete product. We've used it a lot for, well, it's good for building, like use it in saw spots and stuff like that, and gravelling. It's real good for that kind of thing. I'm not too sure about using it actually in the fresh concrete again. I think it's been done, but, yeah, it is a product that's recycled. We actually do a lot, of course, you know, as Norm pointed out, they're stockpiling it at the yard there, but of course, they don't get too much. There just isn't, other than the sidewalks, there isn't too much to recycle. But ourselves, we do, we got a yard north of town, and we crush it up and recycle it there.
Good.
So, yeah, it's a product that's recyclable, so.
Good, okay, thank you, Tyson. Councilor Wallyser, Councilor Frank.
Thanks, your worship, and thanks for coming today, Tyson. This is a conversation, there's been more than months, we've seen a few projects where we'd like to do concrete, but have had to bypass it largely to some of the rules of federal funding. So this is probably more a question to city manager, when we get some of the federal funding for projects, are we able to put in a life cycle, like a life analysis, a life cost analysis?
Thank you, Councilor Frank, to that question. I was just thinking about that when Tyson mentioned that, that generally, our tenders, federally funded programs need to be lowest tender, because they want to make sure we compete across Canada, not just Saskatchewan or Esteban. But I do think we could put a requirement for life cycle costing and see where that comes out of. I'd have to, depending on the project, I'd have to clear it with the federal government, the liaison that we have, to go forward with that. But I think it's something I could definitely inquire into.
Thanks, city manager. Yeah, that's very much my thought, is I know the federal government won't want us to just pick a more expensive product, just because it's better, but if we can at least tie that to some sort of a report, they might let us get away with that.
Yeah, if you look at the longevity that it gives...
Because I don't question you whatsoever. Cement, I think, has the better return on investment for us, for sure. But like you say, with those federal projects, that's the big question mark. And also, we do like your race car driving better than drone driving. I also thought that while Gord was in here, I wanted to make sure that was clear.
Okay.
Go ahead, Councilor Ford.
Thanks, your worship. Something that just sticks out with me with this, I mean, we're heading into spring weight restrictions for trucking right now and everything else. It would be a big benefit on our truck route, if ever come the day that we have to repave everything. Because, I don't know if you know, in the States, they rarely have spring weight restrictions like we do, just because the concrete is so much more stable, that it holds a lot more weight, and it's not susceptible to the frost. But I know Ashley is unable to be here tonight, but are they going to be at SUMA by any chance this year? Is the association going to be there? So if we do have questions, we can kind of bombard them there.
I'm not familiar with SUMA.
Oh, sorry, it's the municipal conference, like the cities and towns conferences. We'll look for them, never mind.
Saskatchewan Urban Municipalities Association, it's every city, town, and village in the provinces represented there.
Okay, yeah, I would think they will be, yeah.
It's our opposition to SARM, which is all the wealthy farmers, when they get together, us poor city folk, we have our own little thing. You know, it's nothing fancy like SARM, but we try our best.
Yeah.
Okay. Go ahead, city manager.
Thank you, worship. Quick question, Tyson. I know in the past, some of the consideration, because of the rebar, and if you did have to dig a service, it was more involved than with the asphalt. But I know there's new fiberglass meshing and stuff. Can you just explain that if there was a water break in a certain area, how that repair would be compared to asphalt?
Right. I've heard that before, too. That, to me, that, you know, that would be a disadvantage in that case. So I guess, you know, to start with, you just wouldn't put it over a road where there is, you know, an old cast iron main. You probably just wouldn't put it over those mains. But I guess, you know, to say that if that's a disadvantage, to me, it's not quite a disadvantage, because you got a tougher road surface, right?
But probably, Tyson, if we did do that, we'd replace the main first, and then do the concrete over top.
Right. That's kind of what I'm saying, you know, when you're doing these main replacement projects, you're putting pipe in that's going to last 50-plus years. So that would be, you know, that would be the time, you know, to start with, anyway. But, yeah, to answer part of your question, I guess, to physically do that, yeah, you gotta saw cut through it and hammer it out. It's definitely more work, but it's plenty to do. We do it, we do it all year. We rip concrete out. There's good technology now to get through there. We haven't used that fiberglass rebar yet, but maybe something that's coming in the future. And then, I don't know that it would be an advantage as far as that goes. I think you'd still have to separate it from the concrete later on. But, yeah, no, that's definitely the one. In that situation, it'd be tougher, but still, plenty doable.
So is that something new, fiberglass rebar? Would it be a lot lighter? Would it be as strong?
Apparently, it's just as strong, yeah.
Wow.
And apparently, now with the steel cost skyrocketing, it's closer in cost. So, yeah, it's, it'll be something to consider in the future.
Interesting, yeah. And Gord, we're just talking about innovation. There is innovation right there, fiberglass from steel. Look at that.
I guess also, you can, an alternative to rebar is you can put fiber mesh in the concrete, and then there's no rebar. There's so many possibilities and different types of this pavement that they engineer. There's even, you can put overlays over top of existing asphalt, mill it down, put an overlay, or sometimes, they don't even mill it down, they could put an overlay on top. There's just a lot. That's part of why I think, you know, we could set up a more extensive meeting later on, if there was interest in it.
Yeah, I'm pretty sure, Tyson, that council would be willing to facilitate that. Kaflu, did you have a comment? You're our resident engineer.
Yeah, just a comment on what Tyson is saying. Concrete works that used with extrudionation, they don't need steel reinforcement. They are done, like most of the concrete work we've done with Glen Peterson, they use steel. So this was plain concrete works they were using, so it's not a necessity.
Okay, good. Well, thank you so much, Tyson, for coming tonight. Councilor Clark, you still have a question?
Sorry, I just did one more follow-up. It's probably more for Ashley, but I also sit on Southeast Transportation Committee, which is more to do with the whole area. Are they meeting with any of the, those groups to talk about it on the highways and different things that are going on?
I believe they are, yeah. They're always, yeah, they're always talking to them, and trying to get things going. It's, yeah, it's kind of a thing, it's not just Esteban around the province, you're not seeing it, but, yeah, they're definitely working to make it more of a, more common around here, and show the advantages of it, and help with engineering, I guess, with it.
Okay, thank you. And, yeah, I know when you talk some concrete around us, Williston, my goodness, that's all concrete now.
Right, yeah.
It's amazing how much concrete they put down there.
Right, yeah, they've done a lot there.
They really have, it looks great.
Yeah, you go into the States, and like, my wife's from Iowa, I go down there, and most of the parking lots down there are concrete, the highways are all concrete. Even, I'll go down a road that would be just gravel here, like just a secondary grid road kind of a thing, and I'm like, it's a concrete road. I'm like, wow, I just, so, yeah, especially when you get further down there, you really see it a lot. And like I say, Mexico, I went down there, and, you know, I'm always looking down at it, whether I'm in a parking lot or on a road, I'm looking down, and I'm like, these are all concrete. And I get asking them, I was the cab driver, and he said, well, down there, what they battle is underground streams there. He said, yeah, we need that concrete to bridge over these underground streams, because he said sometimes, if you have a road, just fall right in, because they have these, well, underground streams, rivers, I guess, he said. And I thought, well, that's, you know, that'd be a heck of a battle, but, you know, we got a heck of a battle here with our freeze thaw cycles and our extreme, as you guys know, warm and cold and everything else climate here.
Yeah, it makes it tough. It's a lot tougher than the US. But having said that, you know, it would stand up a lot better when you go from 40 below to 40 above. It's quite the extremes.
Right.
Well, thank you so much, Tyson, for coming. And maybe what we can do, we can facilitate another meeting, when, what's her name there? Ashley can come?
Yeah.
And maybe do a little bit more in-depth, if you like. We can sure do that.
Sure, yep, yeah, she said they're, they'd like to have that, and say, get some of the experts there, and, yeah, have a little more of a conversation about it.
Absolutely. Well, thank you again for coming, much appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you guys for having me.
Yeah, you're more than willing to stay. I keep asking people, no one takes me up on it. Gord, he has to stay, but usually, they leave. No, you don't, Gord. But anyway, thank you.
First time I've been to one of these, so I'll stick around for a little while, anyway.
Okay, thank you, Tyson. Okay, next, under written reports of committees, this evening, we have none. Under executive reports, from Water Services Manager Shane, we have the wastewater feasibility, Magna Engineering. Please step up to the hot seat and tell us how the open house went. We heard everybody was really excited to come.
So the open house, I hosted it there for two days. I didn't really have any public show up to kind of ask any questions about it, which is standard, it's more complicated stuff. I'm pretty sure if we start building or have to talk about rate increase, then we'll get more feedback from the public at that time. From the people who did come, we did have a local company who is trying to go into the water and wastewater industry, pitched some of their ideas that they had. And I think some of it can be useful, it's just on the same track of, they're in the early processes. And the products that they were supplying would only be used for one of the solutions that required a clarifier, that we would be able to put there, inline clarifier if it was approved. And their other product that they sell is more of a capacity solution, rather than what we're trying to do is more of treatment to get our certain chemicals down, or process down. So I have Jennifer here, who is ready to present. She is the owner and engineer at Magna, and she can kind of go through the process of the option 4A and 4B, which was the subsurface wetlands.
Okay, thank you, Shane. Welcome, this evening. How are you doing, girl?
I'm doing great.
Awesome.
I think the time change is going to make me look like an angel about halfway through the presentation, so I'm dancing around.
Well, that's great. Please go ahead, and, yeah, we're looking forward to your presentation. Thank you.
So, can everyone see my screen starting up?
Yep.
Great. Fantastic. So, I would say, Mayor, if you and council, you're very small for me as I'm presenting, so just yell at me if you have any questions during it, and I'll hear you right away, otherwise we can take questions at the end, too. So, I'll jump right in.
Okay, sounds good.
Great, so thank you, Shane, for the introduction. Yeah, Jennifer Massick, CEO and Senior Engineer at Magna Engineering Services, and really excited to be representing to all of you today. A little history about Magna. We're a Western Canadian-based engineering company. Our specialization is in water treatment. And what that means is across the whole gamut of water, wastewater, and stormwater, specifically in the space of nature-based solutions, that low operation and maintenance type of sustainability. My personal history, two and a half decades of design and construction in municipal infrastructure space, everything from gray and green. Also, a short stint, one term as a city councillor, so I commend all of you for taking up the mantle. I really understand how hard of a job it is, but it's amazing to see you taking care of your community in this way. Out of those combined experiences, and this is why I always tell this story, between engineering and being a councillor, the understanding of what engineering is looking at from, you know, basically, this is what we've been doing for 100 years, we know it works, to the idea of what communities need for long-term sustainability, lowering operation and maintenance costs, trying to address some of the capital costs that come with some of this gray infrastructure. We looked into using more of our experience in that nature-based solution, really expanding it into larger infrastructure spaces. So, over the last six years, we've been designing and constructing these types of facilities across Alberta, D.C., and really looking at the opportunity to be doing it in Estevan to hopefully meet your sustainable needs. So we'll talk a little bit more about it, and we can have questions if you guys have to. So just a little couple images here on some of the work that we've been up to, and just the importance of when I talk about water treatment and nature-based solutions, just the difference between lagoons in the wastewater space, or large storm ponds, where we basically just at the lowest hanging bar for operation and maintenance. And when you look at what you guys have been able to do, working with somewhat intense treatment, being able to discharge it to the Shannon Power Station, there's been all these requirements as we move through time with different affluent targets, and now, not even just for regulations, but because of the change in process for Estevan, we're looking at having to meet tighter and tighter requirements. And so we're seeing more and more importance that instead of adding kind of more expensive and more complex treatment elements, kind of taking a step back and saying, can we get back to nature-based solutions that offer that passive treatment environment, but still meeting those really high treatment requirements? And that was really what the feasibility study for Estevan was all about. So looking at long-term life cycle costs, because that was kind of one of the major value props for what we were reviewing, we kind of ended up looking at a number of different options to make sure, we kind of looked at the whole spectrum, and this is an important part of the FCM grant process, is they want you to look at a number of different solutions specific to trying to include at least a couple of these green, nature-based technologies, because they see the benefit of long-term sustainability for communities. But the importance really was identifying that right away, there were three options we just had to take off the list. And so when Shane talks about viable options, he's referring to the idea that when you look at what a number of different types of technologies can do, they can't meet those tight affluent environments that Estevan need because of the discharge into Sorries River, when that potential comes up, based on what happened to the Shannon Power Station. So really, we had these three options, talking about the MBR as the highest cost option, but however, it is what it is, because it can meet every single treatment requirement that you can throw at it. So with that, with the complexity of it, the higher capital costs, but then also the higher long-term O and M. So then you move into the field of like, what is the whole thing? We're the treatment wetlands components. So when you're doing that large of a footprint, obviously, the capital cost does come, but still local to the MBR, you're getting that lower long-term O and M. So it was a viable second option. This third option was a combination of discussing things with your team, saying, we have done a lot of upgrades to the system that we have, it is working just fine, what aspects can we use of that? it is working just fine, what aspects can we use of that system? And then actually say, what do we need to improve it to get, to be able to release a Sories River? And this is where you're getting that kind of option that we're, we're, it was recommendation of the feasibility study, and that I believe Shane is bringing forward to you tonight, that has that lower capital cost, which allows quite a bit lower than the other two options, and still gets that lower long-term operation and maintenance cost. All of these options would serve the community for the next twenty-five years, um, but the biofilter-based treatment components do operate that substantially lower operation and maintenance over time. So with that, generally giving you an idea, uh, the important part of it is we are looking at recommending keeping the existing MSBR, and so the, what the effluent would do there is it would do a lot of the primary start and secondary process before sending it to the subsurface treatment wetlands. Due to the combination of the two, it's actually a substantial reduction in the need of footprint for the treatment wetlands, which brings down the cost of the overall, uh, capital cost component of the project. In the wetland component, this is where we see the back end of the secondary treatment, also that tertiary treatment that's needed. The modest footprint, uh, that you're seeing on the screen also allows us to work right beside where the existing plant is, but it is also small enough that if it's feasible or desirable, you could actually sit in one of the existing lagoons. So I just want to give you an impression from this point of the footprint of it, but really, the ultimate decision will be made together to see what is the, the most optimized location for the wetlands themselves. So overall, costs are substanti- substantially reduced by reusing the working, existing components of your current wastewater treatment facility, to meeting basic requirements, and then getting that additional add-on, so that really has dropped the overall capital cost, but still getting that benefit of the long-term O and M. So to give you this, this, I always like this slide, like, this is what wastewater looks like, right? So, you know, in the initial process, in the wastewater facility, or, did someone have a question, do you have a question?
Uh, no, keep going, Jennifer, we're doing good.
Fantastic. Um, the initial system separating liquids and solids is happening in the existing building. From there, and that's what I'm saying, it's taking care of some of that initial kind of primary and secondary system, we move over to the subsurface wetlands, and this is really where you're seeing that liquid, liquid waste be turned back into raw water. This is where it's being turned back into a usable product. We're looking at discharging it, obviously, to Sories River, but at this point in time, we could be using it for irrigation and different types of water, processed water. So you get an idea of the quality of water that's coming out of these biofilter-based wetland systems. An additional add-on to the Estevan one, and this is part of the capital cost and everything in there, so there's actually a third uh, wetland cell that we're putting on the very end, that's, um, probably ten percent the size, so it's quite a bit smaller, that we're actually adding an additional absorption amendment, and that's ensuring that we're getting that phosphorus target down to that really strict level that the Sories River requires, so it's like an extra kind of redundant opportunity to ensure that the, the whole system, regardless of the, uh, climate environment or influent discharge requirement, because it change, it varies also, is always meeting those really tight, stringent targets. One thing not shown on this image, just because it's a separate project, is we are also working with the city, um, helping out a company from Alberta that's looking at the gasification process. So when you see in the number one, the separation of liquids and solids, there is that component to bring gasification, uh, which is going to be reducing overall, looking at, uh, revenue recapture and cost reduction in your solid management program, but that's separate program, um, being done, but I did want to mention, it would be part of this overall, overall system. So the part, part of what we're talking about today is we're kind of twofold, right? We're talking about the feasibility study, we're talking about the treatment wetlands and the different opportunities and things that we've looked at, but we're also talking about the next steps of approval process. So when you're bringing anything innovative to Saskatchewan at all, there's two requirements they have, and, and when we say innovative, what we're really talking about is new to Saskatchewan. And a big part of this, as a regulator, they need to have a way to write the approvals when they're finished. So the approval by regulator, regulatory history means you've got twelve months consistent data, so you capture all the seasons, done in a climate similar to Saskatchewan and the same effluent discharge issue. So even though there's quite a few case studies about these being done, there's nothing that meets that exact target. So in conversations with WSA, they were like, we're good, let's do verification, we're all good with that, they were quite excited, they do feel like this is a fantastic option for Saskatchewan communities to be able to meet these increasing effluent targets, and in Saskatchewan, it looks like we're seeing them, uh, across the province. Um, so in Estevan's case, especially with a low flow environment, Sories River, trying to find a win-win that allows us to meet those targets, but yet also have that low operation maintenance component. So they're the ones that push forward for the demo, that would be required to show Saskatchewan-specific, uh, treatment environment, and more important, an Estevan-specific. And the reason I say that is often when we do phased projects, and Estevan's unique, because it's not a phased project, it's gonna be partnered, it's gonna be paid for at one time when the upgrade's done, we would usually recommend doing an initial smaller phase, and then you get site-specific data. And that allows us to shrink the footprint of future phases, and the footprint is all the cost, that's really the big part of it. So what will happen is about, as an add-on to the demo, is it will allow us to find those cost savings in the detailed design when it gets started. And so it's kind of like a way to do this pre-tiny phase, hard-side-up, like, ooh, but be able to reduce the overall footprint, therefore reduce the actually ultimate capital cost. So what the demonstration wetland basically represents is it's gonna be onsite, right next, doing a very small kind of piece of land beside the existing wastewater treatment facility. We're looking at monitoring and testing of effluent real quality based on input quality as it comes in. The requirement of it is to final approval twelve months, but as soon as we have three months of data, we'll be working with WSA to start coming up with those design metrics for them. At this point in time, we could actually start the detailed design process and be using those metrics to kind of align those two approvals, but we'll talk, I do have a timeline slide on here, so I'll talk about that a little bit more when we get there. Um, we'll be submitting a document to them, so they'll be telling us exactly what they want to see from monitoring and testing before we even uh, decide on, on getting out there, if the decision is to move forward this direction. And the pilot funding for this, uh, from FCM, so, so the way that FCM works is once they've funded a feasibility study, they really like phasing the next, uh, sorry, funding the next phase. So it ends up kind of being a bit more of a rubber stamp to process to projects that have already gone through feasibility process. So we know the fifty percent grant funding after fifty, five hundred thousand dollars is a pretty, um, kind of a basic eligibility, uh, requirement for Estevan, however, in our conversations, they did say that they believe that Estevan would also be eligible for up to eight, which is great news, so as soon as we get that submitted, we'll be able to give you more information, uh, on that piece. So I just wanted to share some of the costs and where they came from, um, so you're seeing a lot of detail on this one, which is usually a little more often, but I think that it's important to note kind of where some of these numbers are coming from. Um, of note, what I wanted to point out is this, the capital cost is the majority of it. There's, there's some contingency in here, and we've got the testing, monitoring and reporting, the design, engineering, survey and geotech. So Magna will be providing our services in kind for design of the demo, so we'll be covering the components of the cost that Estevan would be providing for it. And part of that is just the idea that we understand, um, the benefit to, to our company also, to be part of this process. So it, it, hopefully, what it feels like, it's a bit of a partnering type of components, we go through this, this demo process, because long-term, it will be good for future, uh, Saskatchewan projects, too, and, you know, that's, that component is something that, that we can contribute for sure. So then, I wanted to talk a little bit about timelines, so really, what this is, is looking at, um, assuming that the council wants to move forward with the approval today of, of Shane's, uh, request, we would be moving forward a pilot authorization in spring twenty twenty-three here. We would immediately, and that's from the WSA, we'd immediately move into design and then into construction, so getting that started in kind of late spring, early summer. Um, the WSA supported, support based on initial testing, so we'll be doing this whole process with the Water Security Agency, I think I should also specify that, that's the regulator for Saskatchewan, for anyone, I, engineers are terrible, easy outcomes, so we're the worst part. Um, so we'd be working with them through the process, so what this is basically saying is by fall, we'll have a really good understanding of how the system is going to work in Estevan, what the footprint kind of changes might look like, how much we can shrink it by, and WSA will be continuing to support us on what else they want to need to continue to build that process. Um, in that process, during this, we can begin detailed design, if that makes sense, for Estevan, and the reason that that might be a benefit is only because when we get to the twelve months reporting, we can actually submit the whole detailed design package based on the work that we do with Doug Macy through it, so they'll just provide a full approval, um, on, in the, basically at the end of the last month of reporting, so that the approvals happen at the same time. And that just allows an, the earliest possible date for construction in summer twenty twenty-four. It doesn't mean it's gonna be constructed next summer, but if there is, um, interest in getting started at that point, this full timeline can be carried forward so that it is ready to, a shovel-ready project for summer twenty twenty-four. So there's a couple things to do along the way, uh, Magna has some jobs to do, uh, based on if Estevan decides to move this forward today. Uh, so we will be looking at doing the small-scale system design, we'll be applying for that FCM grant ASAP, submitting our proposal for the system to WSA, who have committed to turning it around within a month. Uh, they're quite excited to allow everyone to get to the ground, uh, if that's the desired direction. So they'll provide an acceptance letter for that, and we'll go ahead and, and work with Estevan to get that built. For, for the city, uh, your role in this is if you desire to go forward and approve the small-scale demo project, and by approving this today, you actually provide the background information that's, that we need to move forward with the approval, uh, with the file, sorry, the FCM pilot funding. Uh, and then, I guess, your role in the continued engagement with SAS Power, which will also impact timelines and everything else that, that you might need through the process, so. I hope I didn't talk too fast, I don't like to take too much time, but, so.
No, you, you, you did a great, uh, great job, Jennifer, and, uh, thank you so much for going through that and explaining that for us. And we absolutely look forward to working in a partnership with you and our team, with Shade, with WSA. We've already talked to our MLA, she's going to try to help if she needs to, fast-track it so that we can get, roll up our sleeves and get right down to it. So, uh, we're very excited about this, so we'll open the floor, uh, Councillor Roba.
Thank you, Worship, and thank you, Jennifer, thank you, Shane, for coming, I just really appreciated hearing it again for a second time. Um, Shane, you know, he described it to us the first time, but honestly, hearing it the second time makes you truly understand the process, everything that's involved, and so, thank you, I thought that was, uh, very well explained tonight.
Thank you, Councillor Roba, uh, any other comments, questions, Councillor Sernic?
Thank you, Worship, uh, just to clarify, this process is not approved in Saskatchewan right now, so that's basically the whole unders- undertaking of the.
Yeah, if, if I can just say, it's, it's, this process has been approved in, in BC, it's been approved in Alberta, it hasn't been approved here yet, but, uh, Minister Carr, uh, gives her assurances that she's going to do everything she can to move the province forward, because it is a lot cheaper methodology, a lot cheaper way of processing uh, these, uh, wastewater, so it, we think it's going to be a win-win, and probably, at, at the end of the day, it'd be a lot cheaper. So we did have money set aside from SPC, we'll be using that plus a grant from F, FCM, so there's not a lot of financial weight on the city in this.
Yeah, no, I like it, I think we kind of have to do it, so.
Absolutely, thank you. Any other questions or comments? If not, uh, Councillor Roba?
I would just like to make the recommendation that we proceed.
The motion, okay.
Yeah, with the motion that Shane has recommended for us today on the table.
Okay, thank you, have we, Councillor Sernic second it? Any further questions or comments, ready for the question, all in favor? Carrie, okay, thank you, uh, Councillor Waliser, we caught that little hand going up, so council is fully behind it, Jennifer, Shane, let's roll up the sleeves and go hard.
Thank you, everyone, I'll let you get back to your meeting.
Okay, thank you. Bye-bye. Okay, thank you, Shane, uh, moving forward, uh, under executive reports, again, from Water Services, we have the water quality report for February, Shane, did you have anything to say, it looks great, no extra comments?
None, it's one of our lower, um, month's usage, the, the freezing and warming up and freezing and warming up is starting to take effect on our older areas for our water mains, so that's why we had so many breaks this last month. Um, in certain areas, the water main is starting to get really fatigued, and you, when we repair, it breaks down further down, just because, uh, the bolts and everything like that are eaten out, so. Crews work as per, carefully as you can with an excavator and a bunch of large saws and that, but, uh, it's just kind of the infrastructure's just getting really old in that area.
Okay, thank you for that, Shane, any questions or comments on the report? Uh, if not, it's pretty self-explanatory, could we have a motion, please, to accept that? Thank you, Councillor Ford. Seconded by, Councillor Roba, any further questions or comments? Seeing none, ready for the question, all in favor? Carrie, thank you. Uh, next, under executive reports, we have from Land Development, permit for proposed daycare, we're very excited about this, Richard. We all know how much this community needs, uh, more daycare spaces, so please give us the good news.
Uh, thank you, Your Worship and Council, yes, so we received a development permit application for a ninety space daycare, this would be at an unused space at the West Estevan Mall location, across from the hospital.
And we would refer that to Pattyachi's Clinic, for those who aren't too sure. That was our buddy Patty's clinic, just in case anyone wasn't sure.
I've actually had meetings with him as well, with the doctor, because he was worried that this would take up so much of his floor area that he wouldn't have anything left. But after doing a detailed analysis on his parking, uh, allotments and what have you, uh, he's got room for either an addition or another building there of a certain size on that property, he's got lots of spare space, so he's happy. Uh, I've only received one inquiry, uh, since the notice went out, this is a discretionary use, of course, because it's up front of you, and that was a phone call in support. Uh, typically, I don't receive phone calls in support when things go out, so that was a nice thing to, to see. If council were to, uh, uh, give approval to this proposal, their next step would be to do their building permits and get that in order, because daycare is a higher-end building code requirement than a doctor's office. And once that's all done, then it's off to the Department or Ministry of Education for their license.
Okay, thank you, Richard, Councillor Roba?
Thank you, Worship, I love this idea, I love the fact that it's going to be a twenty-four hour daycare proposed, and I know it says, um, subject to staffing, because we have a lot of nurses, medical staff, doctors. Um, we also have shift workers in Estevan, and a lot of times, single parents, whether that be a single mom or a single dad, can't actually work at some of these, uh, businesses because of the shift work. And so this is great, when I was, uh, growing up in northern Manitoba, we had a lot of twenty-four hour daycare, so it was just normal to me, and then coming to him down here and realizing there wasn't any, everyone just kind of worked with it. This is really good to see. The other thing I would just like to say is maybe as a council, we can contact, um, the college and ask that they actually start these daycare, uh, worker programs for, like, uh, almost as a full-time course, not a part-time, not something, because it would be nice to, even if they could put twelve, fifteen people through a course and get it through quicker, I don't know what the time, it's probably a ten-month course. But I think that's one of the most frustrating parts, is to try and find trained staff. But I think the other thing, too, is we really need to, I know the government came forward and made the ten-dollar a day daycare. And I don't think it's even contingent on what actual person makes, it doesn't matter if you're wage, you just get ten-dollar a day daycare. And I, I personally think that the government failed there, because where they're missing the mark is they should have even put funding in for the actual salary of the daycare workers, because most daycare workers are very, very underpaid for the job they do. So I think that's something else that maybe at, um, SUMA, we can lobby the governor a little bit, too, and let them know that they maybe need to look at that ten-dollar a day daycare. Not saying that everybody doesn't deserve a break, but somebody earning a hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year probably would rather have, I mean, all of us want to have qualified people, uh, take care of our children, but I don't think they need the subsidy as much as they need someone qualified taking care of their children, so. I just think that, uh, if they can do ten-dollar a day, daycare, they can hopefully do, uh, wage subsidy of some kind, too. So I am totally in support of this project.
Okay, thank you, Councillor Roba, good point. Uh, let's hit the ground running and get that training in place, because without the training, uh, they will fall short. And the other thing, the feds, we appreciate the ten-dollar a day, but perhaps they should have expanded that scope to pay a living wage. expanded that scope to pay a living wage to the people working there, because yeah, right now, that would be a short spot, the fact that they're not paid enough.
And I think that's why there's such a high turnover in the daycare industry, a lot of, it's prominently women working in it, but a lot of young women start out there, and then they find a job that's going to pay them a little bit more, and especially if they've got the training, they should be paid for that, so.
Yeah, and like you say, perhaps, Counselor Roba, we can talk at SUMA to the provincial government about helping out, as well as the feds, so. Okay, thank you for that. Counselor Frank, and then Counselor Ford? I think I missed you last time, so I'll let you go this time.
I was just going to second the motion, I assume Counselor Roba made the motion, I don't know, she actually said she'd make the motion.
I didn't want to make every motion.
Oh, okay, well, I'll make the motion then, I guess.
Okay, well, there you go, hand that one over to Counselor Frank.
I was going to second it, I was going to make the motion and ask where I put my name on the list, because we don't have kids yet, but we've already on lists, so.
Absolutely, that's good. Seconded by, thank you, Counselor Ford. Any further questions or comments? Seeing none, again, it's just a fantastic thing for our community. Counselor Walezer, I'm sorry, did I miss you? Did you want to say something? Okay, good. Okay, are we ready for the question? All in favor? Carrie, thank you very much. Thank you, City Clerk. Next, under introduction of bylaws, we have none this evening, public hearings and reports, none this evening giving notice. Proclamation, and I'll try to do better tonight than the last meeting. So this proclamation is Social Work Week, March 20th to March 25th. Proclamation, social work is essential, March 20th to 25th, 2023. Whereas every day, social workers help individuals and families experiencing difficulties in their lives. Whereas they provide crucial supports and services to help their clients overcome complex challenges, including substantive misuse, intimate partner violence, mental health crisis, and intergenerational trauma. Whereas across the province, social workers can be found working in public or private practice, in community-based organizations, and across the health and mental health, education, justice, disability, and child welfare sectors. Whereas they may be engaged in research, policy, planning, or administration. Whereas the Saskatchewan Association of Social Workers, SASW, promotes and governs the profession of social work in the province, ensuring accountability of registered social workers and protecting the public through recognized ethical standards of practice. There are more than 2,000 social workers currently registered in Saskatchewan. The southeast branch of the SASW have approximately 54 members. Be it therefore resolved, I, Royal Lebric Mayor of the City of Estevan and the Province of Saskatchewan, to hereby proclaim, "Social work is essential" on March 20th to 25th, 2023, and ask our citizens to recognize this week. Could I have a motion, please, to reflect that? Thank you, Counselor Clark seconded by Counselor Cernik, ready for the question? All in favor? Carried, thank you. Okay, next, motions from committee this evening, we have none. Consideration of bylaws. We have bylaw 2023-2068, bylaw, solid waste rates, we'll give second and third reading this evening. Okay, being a bylaw of the City of Estevan and the Province of Saskatchewan to establish, charge, and collect rate charges, rents, and deposits applicable to the provisions of utility services by the City of Estevan. Whereas under the authority of Section 831 of the City's Act, the city may establish, set, collect rates, charges, tolls, fares, and rent for the provision of utility services, and may set the time and place where and the manner in which they will be payable. Whereas the council of the City of Estevan deems it necessary and desirable to do so, now therefore, the council of the City of Estevan hereby enacts as follows. So this evening, we'll ask first of all for second reading of bylaw 2023-2068, solid waste rates. Okay, thank you. Counselor Frank seconded by Counselor Ford. At this point, I'll ask if there's any questions? Seeing none, ready for the question? All in favor? Carried, thank you. Now we will ask for third reading of bylaw 2023-2068, bylaw, solid waste rates. Third reading and adoption for use. Thank you, Counselor Roba. Seconded by Counselor Cernik, ready for the question? All in favor? Carried, thank you. Last but not least, inquiries. Counselor Roba?
Thank you, Worship. First, I just wanted to say, Creighton Lodge is actually going to be creating a new program with the seniors, it's called Cycling Without Borders, so just kind of put the word out there, that we'll be looking for some volunteers. It's basically a rickshaw type of bike, and the seniors will sit in the front, and then the volunteer will drive the bike. And so we will only be the second organization in Saskatchewan to become an affiliate to Cycling Without Borders, and if it's a success, with the Creighton Lodge residents, basically had 98% approval with the residents, and two are basically going to be waving from the corner to say, "Have fun without me." They want no part in it, which I don't blame them. So it's kind of like swimming, not all seniors want to do it. So yeah, we're going to have some fun with that this summer, hopefully people will see us out, we're going to have to get a flag so nobody takes us out, but we're going to find a nice, safe route. And then the other thing is, I'd like to say congratulations to the Estevan Bearcats, under 11 league champions. So this is a young group of ladies that have won the championship for the league, which brought a couple of inquiries to me regarding the hanging of banners. They know that we don't want the banners in affinity place, but we're wondering about the Power Dodge Ice Center, so I was just wondering if we could just bring that back. Again, this is not an official request from the Estevan Bearcats, but I would assume that they're going to come. Basically, what the one hockey mom said to me was, "This is a pretty big achievement for these kids, and you're not going to get a banner every year, we don't have an Estevan team in every league that wins." But again, I know there was some reasons why, and I just wondered if we could just look at that, so that when they do come, looking to see if they can hang the banner, if we have a spot to hang it, a reason why. Everyone seems to have a different reason why they can't hang it, so I just thought if we could look into that again and see if we can find something, even if they can hang it for a year, and then take a picture and put it somewhere, or put the trophy somewhere, it'd be nice, because.
I'm sure Counselor Roba, through the good offices of city manager and the management team, we can find something applicable for them.
Yes, hopefully they reach out.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Clark?
Thanks, Worship. Just want to let you know that I've enjoyed being called counselor for the last two and a half years, but I'm now going to have to ask you to call me grandpa as well. My son Lucas and his wife Kayla have just had a baby today, and just wanted to wish them all the best. Thank you.
Absolutely, well, congratulations, Counselor Clark, and all the best. Mom? Mom and baby are doing well?
Very good.
Awesome, thank you. Okay, Counselor Walezer?
Thank you, Your Worship. Last weekend, Counselor Cernik and I were able to attend the firefighters' awards night on behalf of the city, and it was quite exciting to see all the awards and long-service members that we have serving our community, but also they brought it to our attention that it was their busiest year on record. So just wanted to publicly thank the volunteers again for the hard work they do for our community.
Yes, thank you very much, Counselor Walezer and Counselor Cernik for filling it. I was out of town, so thank you very much for that. I love going, you know, the award I like the best is the Brown Nose Award. That is just a howl. In any organization, they should have a Brown Nose Award. Anyway, thank you for that. Did you have anything else? Okay, Counselor Ford?
Thanks, Your Worship. Now that my heart has stopped racing, because I thought Counselor Clark was going to quit on us or something goofy. Just a big thank you to Norm and all of his crew for all the hard work you've put in in the last couple days. I mean, Counselor Roba and I curled at the Swing Into Spring curling event, it was not spring when we left on Friday night, but it was a full-out blizzard, the roads were very impassable at that point, and today, the roads are all clear, I can see pavement and most of the ground, so thank you so much to Norm and his crew, and all the contractors who have been out working diligently day and night for the last couple days.
Absolutely, great job, and we've heard nothing but positive. I know there's always a few cranky people that got up on the wrong side of the bed, but I mean, aside from that, 99.5% of the people were very happy and appreciative of the job that our crew does. Thank you.
I also had the opportunity to attend the Dr. Grimson conversation last week, two weeks ago, whenever it was. It was awesome, I think we had almost 80 people, over 80 people, there was people watching online, it was a very great event, and I just encourage everybody to come to the next innovation conversation, because it was a really great turnout, and I think we all took something out of it. And my only question of the week was, is there going to be a citywide this year? I've had two people ask, and I actually couldn't give them an answer, because I didn't know.
Yep, city manager?
Thank you, Worship. From my understanding, there is, I will confirm the dates on that, counsel.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Ford, and I know Gord will be happy this evening, we talked about innovation all evening, so, you know, it is catching on, and it's a great thing. Counselor Cernik?
Thank you, Worship. Yeah, I've had numerous inquiries into the situation up at ECS, so I just kind of want to ensure that everybody, that the ball is rolling, and everybody is working together to come up with solutions for that, so I guess stay tuned on that.
Yeah, absolutely, yeah. Meetings are taking place and absolutely moving forward, thank you. Counselor Frank?
Thanks, Your Worship. I was away most this week, so I didn't have many inquiries, but I will say, I drove home from Saskatoon, Regina, Weber, and Estevan, and we have the best streets, so good job. Not as good as Puerto Vallarta, but they were good. Everywhere else, nobody had cleared nearly as well as Estevan had, so good job.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Frank. City manager?
Thank you, Worship. I just got a message back, so citywide is on April 4th at 5:30 PM, and we'll make sure to get all the advertising on for that.
Okay, thank you, city manager. City clerk, anything this evening?
Nothing, Your Worship, now that Counselor Clark has not given me a hard to.
Okay, yeah, that preamble, we weren't too sure where that was going. City treasurer?
Nothing, Your Worship.
Well, we're glad you came back from Mexico as well, along with Travis, maybe he was your bodyguard, is that why you came safely back?
Saw and didn't even know Travis.
Okay, well, it's great, you both had a good time. You have a better tan than Travis, I must say, but.
Unfortunately, city clerk or city treasurer gets to go on longer vacations than city councils.
Well, it's all about financial planning, okay? That's all I've got to say on that. Okay, do we have a motion to move into committee? Thank you, Counselor Ford, seconded by Counselor Frank, all in favor? Thank you, stand adjourned. Thank you, and good night.